And to discharge the duty of a member of the city council of the city of Winona, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability during my continuance in office. So help me God.
Well, I'd like to start by wishing everybody a happy new year and congratulations to our two returning council people and our newly elected councilwoman Eileen Moller. Welcome aboard and congratulations. And I have a statement somewhere, correct? Okay. You need to read. Okay. The council went into a closed meeting on December 17th, and this is a statement following that closed meeting. On December 17th, 2018, city council held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Steve Sarvey, city manager. In accordance with the governing law, at this city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the December 17 closed session, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Sarvey reached by the city council at the December 17 closed meeting. Conclusions: Mr. Sarvey did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Sarvey's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As mayor of the city of Winona, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the December 17 closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Steve Sarvey. Mr. Sarvey has met expectations as city manager. Mr. Sarvey continues to work to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Mr. Sarvey works well with other city employees, the public, and businesses, and the city council appreciates Mr. Sarvey's service to the city and looks forward to continuing his employment relationship with Mr. Sarvey for the betterment of the Winona community. And that is all I have. Mr. Sarvey.
I keep looking for my dad. Well, thank you, and happy new year and look forward to a very productive 2019.
Roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurli.
Here.
Moller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the Petitions, Requests, and Communications, item 3.1, reappointments to the Port Authority of Councilmen Borzakowski and Thurli. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.2, reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Councilman George Borzakowski. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Al. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.3, appointment to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Kelly Flurty. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.4 is the Winona Area Youth Hockey Association Report, and their president and reps are here.
We'll start with Chad, I guess.
Mayor and council, as most of you are familiar, the city entered into a facility use agreement with the Winona Area Youth Hockey Association in August of 2015. Although the agreement does not require a report to city council, staff has requested an update and presentation to city council from the association. And staff is making an effort to have all the agreements within the Park Rec Department appear before city council to give an update on their activities. This is an initiative that prior councils have asked for us to do, as well as an initiative within the newly formed Parks Comprehensive Plan. So we have 20, right around 20 agreements that come through the Park Rec Department, and we'll start bringing those or asking those agreements or individuals or associations groups to come before council. With that, members are here from the association.
Mr. Michael Sloggy here to give a report.
Hello, everyone. Hello, if I haven't met, please introduce our councilman Scholmeyer, Councilperson Moller. Nice to meet you. Mike Sloggy, I was president of the Hockey Association for the last couple of years, and with me tonight is Darcy Prodzinski. She's the incoming president, but she convinced me to do this one more time. It's a certain thing in action, so I'm pleased to be here tonight. You know, there's a steady line of communication between ourselves and city staff, but it's a nice opportunity to be able to come in front of council who approved this partnership and just tell you a little bit about where the program is at, talk about some of the partnership items we've got going on, and then obviously see if there's any questions. With that, these talks began about improving rink back in 2014. Just as a growth matter, we had 183 skaters in the association. This year, we have 215 signed up. That continued a steady trend of increase that we've seen that started back in 2009. In addition to the numbers, we're in our fifth year of a skating development program that we worked with a gentleman from Northern Minnesota on that's yielded amazing results in the abilities of the kids at all levels on their skating, especially the younger ones. So we're very excited about the increase in skaters that the ranking improvements have shown, and in addition, the program that we've implemented is also yielding results. This year, from last year, we were able to add a third team of nine and 10-year-olds, as well as add an 11- and 12-year-old girls' team to complement the 10-and-under girls' team that we formed last year. Great numbers on both sides, but we were especially happy to add the second girls' team, as that'll hopefully fill the pipeline for the high school moving forward. Looking forward, as I said, our numbers suggest that we should be able to maintain two to three teams per age level, which is a really great spot to be at. It really gives a good opportunity for the kids to get at a level that really matches their play and increase their enjoyment of the season. One of the interesting things that's been a development since the talks began on the ranking improvements is this year, out of our eight traveling teams, three of the coaches are what we refer to as non-parent coaches. So these would be individuals that just have nothing else than a love of the game and have volunteered their time, not because they're kids on the team, but because they want to be a part of what's happening. It's a great compliment to the wonderful parent volunteers we have who take the time to be on the ice with the kids. But factoring in these individuals that have either come through the Winona Association in a couple cases, or in a couple cases moved to the area, we find it's a great enhancement just for the kids to skate with a parent for a couple of years and then maybe hear that outside voice and then continue their development. So that's a metric we're really proud of, to have interest from outside of just the parent community coming in. And in terms of recent progress, we had a team last year was successful. They won the district tournament, which we were trying to figure out before the meeting. We think it was the first time since 2010, but it might have been 2008. So that was a district tournament. They went on to compete at the regional level. So we were proud of those kids. This year, we do have one of our teams that's currently ranked in the top 10 at the state level. So very excited about what's going on at the association. In terms of just the general partnership facts you may be more interested in, talking to Patrick Minton about the Christmas, recent Christmas break, we were able to offer dozens, at least, of hours of public skate and public hockey. Patrick's report on that was that the rink was packed for that, and that would be a combination of association kids, but also the general public. So we always effort to get as many hours as we can for general public skate, public hockey, so this Christmas break was a great example of that. I was hoping that Dundersheimer would be here. Last winter, he sponsored a disco night down at the arena, and they thought they had, I believe, 400 people come through the door that night, and the association was there just in kind of a role to help with skates, help with concessions, and just by their head count, they said they recognized maybe 75 of those families. So that was attended by the vast majority of the general public, so it's not just members in the association that is using the rink. And, you know, we look for that to continue in the off-season too, obviously, as, you know, we hear a lot of ideas about what can be done up there. But yeah, in terms of partnership, I feel we enjoy very steady level of communication with the staff. It's been interesting that I'm transitioning things over to Darcy, kind of at the same time that Chad Newble, obviously, moving into more of the assistant city manager roles. We've got Patrick Minton, who's been really more of a contact in the last year, just always there, always receptive, proactive on things. It's been, hopefully, my transition out goes as smoothly as the one integrating Patrick into the communications chain. So we're very happy with that. Both Chad and Patrick are available throughout the season, where, again, we're here just tonight, but say throughout the off-season, throughout the season, we're pretty much constantly flowing information mainly to the city, whether it be financials or numbers, or updates, or anything that we're doing equipment-wise, those sorts of things. There's a pretty steady flow of communication. This is, I say that once every other year, I guess, that we've been here, but if we're here every year, that's better yet. In terms of communications, we recently, year-end, financials, we have a June 30 at year-end. So those were approved in December. That was kind of the schedule, which the accountant has us on, and those were submitted to city staff earlier. So, you know, our commitment is to make those available essentially as soon as we have them. So they presented in December, and we continue to get those over to your way. In terms of new initiatives, we've got a couple of things going where it's been interesting watching the recreation department starting some initiatives with the three-to-five, three-to-six-year-old kids, whether it be baseball, basketball, those sorts of things. So we've had some talks in terms of seeing if there's something we can do to help, or if we can work together with our young skaters, where we've got some expertise with the instructors. Maybe the city has some different reach to show some families ice skating or ice hockey that they may or may not be reached by us. So we're excited to see what happens there. Wrap up in terms of partnership, I guess, outside of the city, we're offering three tournaments this year, and then an additional single-day tournament. And the reason I bring that up is the tournament weekend will typically attract somewhere around 14 teams to Winona. Each of those teams has around 15 players on it. Each player typically brings, you know, both parents and maybe a sibling. I think this last study, I saw it was two and a half, but at any rate, that's roughly 210 families that come to Winona, usually in January or February, other than the Rosemont Film Festival, not a lot of other draws to the area. So that's a show on Friday afternoon, leave Sunday afternoon, so the impact on economy, hotels, restaurants, gas stations, it's kind of obvious. But, you know, we'd like to grow that as much time as allowable by the male or wife. And as I said, with that, if we can work with the city to increase the reach as far as we can hold up as far as teams that maybe don't care about our tournaments, and the other interesting thing we're thinking about is to do a better job on our side and communicate with the city where our tournaments are, so if there was programming, say at the, you know, a live at the Levy event, or something along those lines, if we've got these 200 families in town, they're not all going to have a game at 7:00 on Saturday night, so a few things we're excited about. But those are just a couple of quick notes. If anyone had any questions, you may ask to answer them.
Cool.
Thanks, Mike. I really appreciate the opportunities and appreciate that the public has the opportunity to use the ranks during the holiday season. The outdoor ice hasn't been that great the last few weeks, and so having that indoor ice has really been, I think, helpful. I'm curious about how the outdoor rink has been for your association, and has that maybe been helped with the number increase?
Yeah, unquestionably, we're, I think, I mean, we're obviously a very southern-based city, I think we're the, I think, the most southern rink in the state. The nearest one is, I mean, an hour and a half, hour and forty-five away. And, you know, I think this is, on a mechanical side, it's probably arguable this is the best year we've had with the outdoor rink. We've had, I mean, this, you know, last weekend, 47 degrees, that's a little rough, but the amount of ice we had through December, you know, on Christmas break, where you did have public out there skating, or our kids, it's a huge resource. If there's a, within the association, if there's a game going on, you could have a sibling that can be outside on that rink instead of sitting on a bench or running around the arena, those sorts of things. For us to be able to line up games and have that team coming to Winona, you promise you an outdoor game, weather allows, I mean, I think each team last year had at least one outdoor game. And, you know, the look on the kids' faces when they come out of the building and see that rink, it's, you know, whether they win or lose, or whether it's 10 below, or it's 35 and slushy, it's a fantastic experience that a lot of hockey-playing kids in the state are not exposed to. So for our tournaments, you know, we had two, either team was from Winona, but we were able to have outdoor games for them, and, you know, the parents loved it, the kids loved it. It's a great, great asset. Obviously, you know, weather-dependent, it's kind of hard to promise outdoor games, like for a tournament or something, but if we can accommodate them, you know, we'd love to. You know, when it's working, the rink staff has been very accommodating at having that be open for, whether it be a public skate or public hockey, so it's not, again, it's not just association kids using it. You know, we'd love to see that thing open from the moment school gets out until the moment a team needs it or something like that, and just have kids go down the scene.
So it's like, build it and they will come?
Yeah, I don't think we've realized the full potential yet, but that's definitely been the trend. Like I say, tremendous interest from other teams. I think the, it was either last year or the year before, the high school hosted a team from Mankato over here for an outdoor game, and I think it was Mankato, and they bought, Mankato bought brand new jerseys just for the outdoor game, just showing that it was really something special for them to come over and play. They weren't just going to wear the regular wear jerseys, they had something special for them, so.
Wonderful.
So it's a great resource.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Al?
Yeah, as a former director of the convention and visitors bureau, I can attest to the economic impact those tournaments bring to the community, especially in the, you know, well, maybe back when I was there, not-so-busy winter months, this kind of environment has changed a little bit, but that's a good thing for all of us. You know, and the city has really, and the hockey association have really invested a lot in this partnership to remodel and upgrade. We talked about the outdoor sheet of ice and all the things that have been going on for that, and I'm curious, you mentioned during your report something about the financial aspect of the association, and I know there's a requirement in the agreement that you make a report to the city for those years. Is that something that you've done so far, and would those reports be publicly available or at least available to city council members?
Okay, excuse me, just a second. Yeah, like I said, for our most recent fiscal year, which wrapped up in the year, we just submitted that. My knowledge, the 17, 18, or the 16, 17 season, the 15, 16 season are both currently unfiled with the city, and that, you know, that's the IRS form of your interest, it's called Form 990, so that's actually a publicly available document that would be searchable by any individual if they did want to go through the city, but that's obviously also unfiled here.
I, for one, would like to have a copy of the city's report if I could, and if anybody else on council would be interested as well. Good, thank you.
I can add about 17 agents, so.
Or just send us a link to the online.
Yeah, that's fine, too. Yeah, it's not an inexpensive operation, I'm sure, to get everything together, and especially during the partnership issues. Okay, great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, thank you very much, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Moving on to item 3.5 is an update on the Minnesota High Speed Rail Commission by Councilman Scholmeyer.
Thank you. So I wanted to update council and the community on some of the changes happening at the High Speed Rail Commission. One of the roadblocks we've had to convincing the legislature to bond the second phase of the study for the second train, the TCMC from Chicago to the Twin Cities, is the name, the Minnesota High Speed Rail Commission. There is a lot of opposition to high-speed rail, both in Wisconsin and in Minnesota, and not just from legislators, and we have taken upon ourselves to do some rebranding. At our January meeting just last week, we did unanimously decide to change the name of the Minnesota High Speed Rail Commission to the Great River Rail Commission, and we'll be taking that name forward with our rebranding. I did present to you what a mock-up of the logo we're looking at, we're adding, there will be some color added to the logo, and when we finalize the rebranding material, I will bring that to council. That'll probably happen possibly by next month, because we were anxious to get this rebranding work done in time for the legislative session that begins soon.
I think it's a smart move on their part. Thank you for serving, too.
That's all I have to report.
All right.
And moving on to item 3.6, a request for off-sale permit for off-site permit for lawful gambling for the Warrior Club to be used at Winona State University. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
New business, item 5.1 is the selection of the council president pro temp.
I make a motion to reappoint George Borzakowski. I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Item 5.2 is the renewal of the property and liability insurance for 2019.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation for the 2019 insurance.
I will second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any questions? Al?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to note that our costs from 2018 to 2019 have gone down $6,131.
And mayor and council, that's exactly right, and it's mainly because of municipal liability overall window.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is the renewal for 2019 of workers' cup and an accident plan for city volunteers. Move to approve this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Eileen. Any comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.4 is the Bluff Traverse Conservation and Recreation Area Master Plan.
I move to adopt the motion.
Second. Second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. And Ross, you want to come up?
Good evening, mayor and council. I know this is a little easier to digest than the comp plan that came recently, but I wanted to go ahead and put together a small set of slides, I guess, that just covers the basics of the plan and field of the questions that you have. So digging right in, I just threw here the planning process slide, so this mirrors the same planning process that was in the comp plan document, because this was the same process that we did for the master plan as well. So I just want to put that in there and reiterate that this was the same, yeah, same process, essentially. Just, again, an overview of the document, even though we've already through it, really just looked at the vision and trends in the community as well as in outdoor recreation, reviewed the current conditions of the parks in question and trail system, looked at the natural resources, impact, as well as opportunities for redevelopment and restoration, and then briefly looked at operations and areas to partner for that, and then we get into kind of the meat and potatoes, the concept plan, which shows the trails and additional facilities, and then briefly touch on funding opportunities as well. First, I wanted to put up, prior to getting to the trail plan itself, the corridor map, and just wanted to highlight that although 1A, kind of there at the bottom, south end of town there, is what we're talking about with the Bluff Traverse, this kind of different layout of these corridors and the priorities are important, but it doesn't happen in a linear fashion, so I just wanted to highlight that any of these could be developing at the same time, for instance, 2B with the flyaway trail corridor, even though that's priority two, you know, Buffalo County's making great headway with that, so we're working simultaneously on that in addition to this plan. Another great example would be 3A with the Levy or Riverfront Trail, continually working on access for that and easements as well. So I just wanted to highlight that this, even though this has priorities on it, it's not a linear development, they can happen simultaneously as opportunities arise. With that, then, just going into the trail concept plan itself, so this is a little small, obviously, but I just wanted to show the overview, and then on the next slide, I've got it a little bit more highlighted, so can we go to the next one, please? Oh, sorry, back one. Maybe my order's out. What's that? Go ahead and go forward. There we go. Sorry. So I apparently have it out of place a little bit. But just highlighted here, so we've got redevelopment of the bluff site trails, looking at creating some new systems, as well as using some of the existing trails, and then forward on them. And then also looking at connecting the new Sugarloaf Trailhead, making our way over toward Garben Heights. Again, this is the same document that was in the comprehensive park plan as well. In addition, the plan highlights areas that we need to look at reclaiming or restoring back to natural habitat, or redeveloping more sustainable trails within. And then I just wanted to note on here as well, very similar map, but again, this shows, the previous maps show trail systems that cross into private property, so I just wanted to reiterate that that would require us to work with private landowners and secure access with willing landowners to develop those trails. In the event that were not to happen, we have an alternative alignment here. In the event that were not to happen, we have an alternative alignment here. Next slide, please. In addition, what's not in the comprehensive plan, but is more highlighted in this plan, is proposed trailhead amenities. So looking at some updated parking facilities, as well as things like restrooms, water stations, those components. And what they're doing as well is not just updating them, but increasing the space available. Next, for me? So have that a few different spots. Just wanted to highlight that. And then again, on the next slide, it goes through and gives their best estimate on what those facilities could end up costing, which goes toward that in dollar. And then finally, they highlight a few different funding opportunities or sources, looking at opportunities for local dollars, and then some granting dollars, which, looking at the legacy fund, Minnesota DNR grants, as well as federal dollars. I just want to say the legacy funding that is, really, all these granting opportunities are coming at us relatively quick. Legacy funding, that process is somewhat underway in those funds. The deadline is in July. But some of the DNR grants and federal grants come up here, really, this spring, starting in February and March, as well as the legacy process is really from now through that July timeline, a few different steps. So with that, I believe that is all I had. So any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer.
George?
Yeah, thank you. Now, by adopting this tonight, and I know it was clear in your agenda item, we are not approving any funding for this plan tonight, correct?
Great question. That is correct. So this is just the concept plan to reaffirm essentially what was highlighted in the Comprehensive Plan. And then from this, this allows us to continue to develop and researching, write the grant proposals. And at all those stages, we would come back for approval for specific action items to develop.
Because the view of the general public, they're saying that tonight, we're going to be approving 3.2 or $5 million for this particular trail. And that, as you mentioned, the agenda item, just to make it clear to the public that that is not happening tonight. So, and as far as local dollars go, that could be tax revenue, private donations, a mix of things?
Absolutely. So it would be just leveraging the plan to, so there's volunteer work, which could be considered matching dollars for grants, and then, yeah, capital improvement funds, budget funds, and then private donations as well.
Ross, by approving this tonight, we're placing this as the first priority for all of the trails that we're looking at doing. So this would be the focus for park and rec until this is done, or maybe trying to do some of these other trails at the same time? I guess I'm just curious.
Yeah, so what this does is this is really a formality for applying for those larger grant dollars. So a lot of this work has started prior to this plan, but this is a step along the way. So approval of this will help to continue that process, but other projects will happen simultaneously as well. It's just that this, the planning process worked out really well with the Comprehensive Park Plan to complete the master plan in conjunction with it.
I feel like I've been hearing about, you know, the riverfront and the levee trails for decades. I'm just wondering, you know, will you be focusing on that? Do you, you'll continue to focus?
Absolutely. Great question. So, and that's what I was trying to get at with that corridor slide, is that the opportunity with the Bluff Traverse is something that we could be building shovels in the ground as soon as this coming summer. And so that's an opportunity to get some, for lack of a better term, well-hanging fruit. But while that's happening, the riverfront trail is absolutely something that's being worked on as well. But the timeline on completing that process, just by the nature of the easements and engineering feats that need to take place, and then funding dollars as well, is going to take a little bit more to accomplish. So trying to work on those projects simultaneously so that we can capture some of those victories and development while getting the riverfront trail kind of in the hopper.
Oh, I'm sorry, George.
Yeah, no, just, no, no, you were fine. Just to back up on what you just asked, when we talk about this river trail, are we talking about including the entire Dyke System from, let's say, from Peerless Chain up to the levee and beyond?
So that's a good question as well. I think that would depend largely on the private landowners along the way that we don't have easements with yet. So really, the trail theoretically could be as long as we have access to. And then we'd have to go through and do some additional planning from there and engineering to figure out what exactly the cost would be, and then start soliciting additional funding for that.
Because not to break from what we have here, which is a good plan here, I know there's a lot of interest in the general public of the river trail using the Dyke System. And of course, that again is very expensive as well, too, as everything is expensive, so.
And that is why, just to back to that corridor piece, that's why that was number two on the list, is that, and again, not happening in a linear fashion, but we can get going on the Bluff Traverse and apply for those dollars and leverage volunteers and nonprofit organizations to start that immediately in the development phase, once approved and, you know, conditions are right. But then being able to continue that larger planning for the levee trail through that whole process.
Thank you.
Al, you look like you're...
I think councilperson Iden had some questions, or? I thought you were ahead of me, so.
Yes, I just wanted to, I know this, too, is in your, is in your plan and in the agenda item, but I just wanted to reassure people that any trails that will be built on those bluffs will be, will be vetted completely through the Bluff Land Protection Ordinances and DNR requirements. So it'll be treated very carefully. That's true.
Absolutely. So through the Comprehensive Plan adoption, as well as a portion of the master plan, all trails would be developed after an archaeological and biological assessment. And then from there, it'd be following best practices and national standards through the DNR best practices, as well as the Guide for Quality Trail Development.
Great. So we'll hear about this again, then?
Absolutely. Yep. Again, so everything that would be actual development will come back. This is just to approve the concept and be in support of that.
Al, you look like you're...
Yeah. You know, I was interested in this whole priority issue. Who do you anticipate using the Bluff Traverse as opposed to, say, a river corridor? I mean, is there a definite, you know, category of users for one over the other?
In my opinion, I'd say that everyone could access both trails. I think you'll get more, you know, I think when I look at the trails through Bluff Side and the connection here, the traverse, we've got a lot of folks that are interested in mountain biking and hiking and trail running that maybe haven't gotten involved yet. And so being able to go through and do this development, have better signage in those pieces, we're going to see a large increase in that use, both locally and regionally. As far as the riverfront trail, I think very similarly, we'll get, we'll get users that historically used Levy Park in that area now, but may alter their, you know, instead of using the lake path all the time, they may use that path in addition. It's not exact numbers.
Yeah, okay. One of the issues that I, you know, after reviewing this, I looked at was the Windcrest cul-de-sac usage, and whether those residents have been, especially in the cul-de-sac areas, have been apprised of what may or may not be coming if this, again, receives funding and if this is, you know, approved by council to move forward on. What kind of feedback have you had from those folks?
As a part of this planning process, we have formally gone and vetted with all of those landowners. That would be a next step. But I will say anecdotally, working with those folks through other projects and seeing them while out working on the trails, you know, generally, folks are open and excited. And the other piece with that is that those areas are already being utilized as parking facilities. They're just not the amenities.
But not as directly and not as promotionally, you've got a marketing component of this as well. So obviously, you know, those folks are going to see a greater impact in their neighborhoods, and that's one of my concern, because it's, you know, a first-world area.
Sure. And that's a, that's a great question, something I didn't address in that initial presentation. So those, those trailheads, especially the one right there off of Windcrest, would be more for local, top access. And that's where you see the parking facilities recommended at, more like the Sugarloaf and Bluff Side and Garvin, being larger capacity to ideally would drive people to those locations and not the smaller catch spots.
Also, on the top of the bluff, the article talks about, or at least the master plan talks about, an estimated 40,000 to 50,000 visitors yearly to the Garvin Heights overlook. And, you know, I read a report like this, and I see in the first sentence, an asterisk after the, after the numbers here, and then I don't see any reference further along to those numbers. And I'm kind of curious as to what, what that would have included as far as, you know, the research done that gave rise to those numbers and so forth.
Sure.
I'm a little concerned about that. And then I, you know, again, you correctly pointed out something on page 53, which is, as far as cost estimates go, it doesn't talk about the cost of easement land purchasing, infrastructure, utilities, stormwater management costs, or any legal fees. So, I mean, it's, it's a number of hoops to go through before any of this ever happens. And hopefully, there'll be a lot of public input as this progresses going forward. You know, I had a chance finally to spend some time reading it, so had a chance to really understand it a little more better than I did the park's plan.
And just one additional note with that, that I also neglected to add, is that this is also a living document, like the Comprehensive Plan. There are a few little, small pieces that may need to be addressed.
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I appreciate the source for the Garvin Heights overlook numbers.
Michelle?
I think when this first came up a few years ago, I'm excited to see this plan, in no small part because of the number of users we have right now. And as I know, they get lofts up there, and they call down from up there, and they're like, I can see doll. How do I get down the hill? So for me, because the people are already using it, if we can make it safer, give them signage, waypoints, and give them better access and a better parking facility, however we can get to that funding part, yes, there are hoops to jump through. But I happen to know that the people that live on Windcrest, for the most part, are using the trails, and then the people that, from down below, are climbing up the trails, walking around and coming back down. And, yeah, there might be a few people that don't like that, but I think for the most part, people have been respectful of each other's property and haven't just, you know, sloshed through. But I think giving them a clear trail that's safe to maneuver with their families is the right step, and I'm 100% in support of this. And I look forward to seeing this and the future plans come together so that we have a system that kind of connects throughout the whole city and allows people to walk or bike wherever they would like to go safely.
Well?
I guess I don't have a question, Ross. I appreciate the detail. There is, for many of us, maybe more detail than we can handle. Of course, the sensationalizing of the 3.2 million doesn't help us, you know, kind of wash out what some of that detail is. I do think that Mr. Sloggy pointed out very clearly that if we build it, they will come. We invested in that hockey rink and the facilities and the upgrades. And what we have is, we have, you know, a commitment to a higher quality of life, to more access to recreational facilities in our community, and they're being used by not just community members, but by people coming from outside the community, spending dollars here in the town. Clearly, it's, it's an opportunity for economic development, and that's how I look at it. I've already been using the trails in many different ways, as well as the ice rinks, and I really appreciate having them. And I think, you know, I hope that this year, we can, we can, and soon, visit making a commitment, like the commitment that we made to, to the ice arena, when we bonded some $500,000 to make those improvements, or somewhere in that higher, you know, number.
1.2.
1.2 million. And I think we have an opportunity here to get even, you know, exponentially more if we make that commitment. And I also hope that we, as a council, can visit another avenue of funding, and by seriously considering an entertainment and beverage tax this year to, to help pay for those improvements. That we've seen by earlier, earlier this evening, when we saw the market value of the homes here in this community increased because of the work we've been doing to improve the quality of life here in our, in our city, I think we have that opportunity to continue that increase if we make, make a statement and get some revenue for, for those assets. So that's...
Other comments, questions, or else? If not, is it ready to vote? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is item 5.5, the Sobieski Park Pavilion Change Order Request.
Make a motion to approve the 68,500 from the facilities fund to cover the costs.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Comments? Michelle?
I just want to thank the East End, what is that, Neighborhood Watch Group, who helped spearhead fundraising to get us a little bit further. And I think we can do our small part to finish this project and end up with a beautiful facility on that end of town. And I'm very much in favor of this, and I think whenever you can get community partnerships where they buy into a project like this, it includes us to then do our part to finish it off.
I agree wholeheartedly. I think it's a great project and a lot of time and effort, and volunteer hours have gone into this project and it's real quads for the park. George?
And to thank council, too, on their support for the whole project, there's many contractors, many individuals. Jamie himself has been a volunteer with the project down there, so it's coming along very well, so.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Item 5.6 is the supplemental 2019 Transit Grant Application for Shelters and Signage. I distributed an additional handout for council, but we're looking at installing approximately 15 additional shelters and new signage to replace the street signs that had the little Ts on them. The total grant would be 245,000, with a local share of 49,000 coming from the Transit Fund Reserves.
I'd make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion, questions?
I just want to say, I know some transit users, and the shelters are going to be a real welcome addition. And I think it's, it's a great move in the right direction, making transit more viable and appealing to many of our residents, so really happy to see this.
Anything else?
And we're, we're looking forward to the new routes, so these will, will support that new route system that we're coming up with right now.
George?
Are these all new shelters, or are these existing ones with the addition of some new ones, or?
These would be all new shelters.
Okay.
We currently have maybe six throughout the system.
Okay.
So this would be augmenting those current ones.
Good. Pam?
Yes. Where are we at with the change in the bus routes? So our Transit Advisory Committee will be meeting in a couple of weeks to review another draft. We've had one input session with the bus drivers in December. We'll be holding two public input sessions in February, and the mayor will be announcing those at our next meeting. Planning to come back to council with our draft probably in mid-April.
Planning to come back to council with our draft probably in mid-April, with implementation July 1st. Thank you.
All right, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.7 is a small cell wireless facilities aesthetic policy. I would note, this is a policy and not an ordinance.
And make a motion to introduce the attached policy.
Resolution.
Resolution, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Because I want to thank the people for working on this. I think it's important that we have this kind of a policy, and I appreciate the efforts.
No, we can't, we can't technically, according to state and federal law, we can't oppose it. As opposed to the concept of small cell wireless, but at least we can try to regulate it as aesthetically pleasing to our community as possible. So I approve of it.
And without council action, our hands could be tied in the future. So this at least gives us an opportunity to work with the providers and help out so that it's an asset to the community. The 5G is going to be a very important infrastructure upgrade for the community, but it's not going to be helpful if there are ugly poles, so.
Right. Or other elements that are on the ground level.
Correct.
As necessary to support the antennas.
All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Eileen tonight.
I don't have any, I'm just happy to be here.
Okay, well, we're happy to have you. All right. Al?
And welcome to councilperson Muller.
Michelle?
Happy New Year.
It's going to be short.
I'm going to join that. Happy New Year.
I'm going to join that, and again, also wish Eileen Muller welcome to council.
And George?
So I have additional time. Very good, very good. Yeah, Eileen, welcome, and I hope you enjoy it as much as I enjoy it with all the responsibilities and the challenges, and it's certainly rewarding. And when I came on board 20 years ago, like you, I came on as the only new member. And just a quick walk in history, in first ward seat, when I came on was Harlan Knight, then there was Jerry Craig, Tim Breeza, Monica was here, Jerry Miller, Eric Sorensen, Jay Koner, Dieter Milamunka, and myself. So I came in with a group of veterans that knew their stuff, so we were ready to go. But congratulations, and you'll do well, so. And also, again, as I mentioned, tonight, taking the oath of office to serve again for, for another term, very appreciative to have that, to have that responsibility from the voters. And I often think of those that have stood before me, not only sitting in this seat, but the other seats as well, too. And the decisions they made from back in the, in the '50s and the '60s and the '70s, it's things that we're enjoying today, things that we're doing, decisions we're making have made, will benefit the future of the younger generations coming up, plus herself. So thank you very much, and Happy New Year.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from December 17th, an ordinance to remove handicap parking on Walnut Street, not Wabashaw, and a claim against the city by Pedersen Delbert for David Wera.
I would move approval of the consent agenda, however, I do want to pull the minutes for a correction.
Second.
So that's 8-2, 8-3.
Okay. Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of item 8.2 and 8.3, say yes.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. We got it. You threw me off there, Al.
You bet.
We'll go back to 8.1, though.
I would then move approval of the minutes from December 17th with one correction on item 3.2 to correct the name of the street from Wabashaw to Walnut.
Okay.
Otherwise approving minutes as they were submitted.
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We got a motion and a second from George and Pam to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Return.
Five minutes, seconded, now your best presentation.